Jessica, won't they let you sit on the back row with them?
Looks like a lineup to me.
They're hiding this is the best part of their day. Nobody knows where they are. Pam, are you all in pretty good shape for your event next Wednesday?
It's all good.
Good, good. How many people are having a party today?
A hundred and eighty.
That's great, that's great. And that's all as well. Yeah, I think it's a good idea. Can we call the meeting to order and let's stand for pledge of allegiance?
I'll pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, if you see it. I don't have any announcements in particular. If you have not had a chance to see the agenda online, we are first going to discuss the allocation of our American Rescue Plan funds, the remaining portion of them. We've allocated 1.4, 1,480,000, 800, 1,480,800 dollars worth of the 2.6. And if you don't have an agenda or an allocation in front of you, do they?
It's on the screen.
Okay, there you go. You can see we allocated a half million dollars to the Lake Tomahawk Dam repair, which we had to do. Half million dollars to the Highway 7, the water line, which we needed to do, and had might be worth appropriate work for it, but we needed to do that. Charlotte Street sidewalk, $65,000. Public Safety Bay apron, that's concrete in front of the pad in front of all the bays. 100,000 pickleball courts, 120, and Gray Eagle renovation repair is keeping up to date, up to date. A roof on it, truly the roof that's mentioned.
Some insulation, the turf, lights.
Yeah, so what? 195,800, there's your total. So we're going to talk about the remaining two, what is that?
1,119,000.
Right, let's call it 1,120,000. So with that, Josh, do I turn it over to you? What's the direction for council or just open it up to council for discussion?
I think that's fine.
All right, all right. We'll do that. Council, what do you think?
Josh, could you, do you have a sense as to how accurate these allocations are currently? You know, as prices increase?
I can tell you for sure, the number six, so far as the Public Safety Bay Apron, that is accurate because we're at a great start at work probably in the next week or two. So that, that, that price is accurate. Charlotte Street sidewalk should be relatively close to being accurate. Now, we're not going to start that immediately, so it could fluctuate a little just with material costs, I'm sure. The water line, it may fluctuate some. I think the dam is, is in good shape. The last time I saw construction estimate was about, about 400,000. So maybe a little bit over on that one right now.
What's interesting, you just led the public on the status of, of every project that has it, if it's underway in some sense, if you could do that.
Sure. So the Lake Tomahawk Dam project, that's been underway for quite a while. And it's been back and forth with Army Corps of Engineers and what kind of dam safety who we're waiting on now to give us the final approval. Army Corps of Engineers has already approved and we have our permit now to go to work with the Gasoline and Dam Safety. My conversation with them, I think last week was that we're still in queue and I think we're number two right now that need reviewed. They've got a show of staff like everybody else, as you can imagine. So the plan is for that one to start this winter or early spring. So I'm hoping that we can get underway this winter, be done by the middle of spring because we'll have to probably lower some lake levels a little bit to get this stuff out all the way, I don't think. But that's where we are with that.
And what is the, I understand solid is projected subject for approval, but what is the work going to be?
So the tentative plan right now, of course, awaiting dam safety's approval, is to do some enlargement on the spillway. The dam was built in the 30s. You can imagine that it does not meet today's standards. So that's part of the reason for the work. The other reason is the seepage that's occurring on the earth and side of that of the dam, which is very common. The plan right now for them is to do some decorative block on that side of the building. There will be some topsoil on that. We think it can be planted like bushes and some flowers, pranials, but no trees. So it will be, it will be, it won't just be blocked altogether. There will be some landscaping on it as well.
Is that block going all the way up or is that?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So it would be from essentially the toe up to almost the track level from over the dam.
On the back, on the outside?
Yes, the outside.
The exterior.
Facing Cragmont.
Okay.
That's the plan. It could change a little bit based on what dam safety approves. That's where we are with that project. Water line project, I think 500 is a good number right now. The thing about the water line is we're, we have to wait on the lines to be available. Right now, the line is, it's a year after you can get any kind of water line that big. Any kind of duct line pipe you can't get. The last time we talked to the supplier last week, it's 42 weeks for water.
So what about the engineering? Do you have to wait till you're closer?
The engineering is moving forward. I talked to Jesse last week. He's about 40% complete on the engineering. Charlotte Street sidewalk, we have had a survey done for that project, so we know where the roadway is. That's going to be kind of a partnership with the school system to move the fence back a little bit. So it'll be going around, squirting around that, essentially the field they've got there on Charlotte Street, the primary school. That, like I said, has been, has been surveyed, excuse me. But we'll need to be a little engineering done where we connect to State Street because that's a DOT highway. They're going to require some engineering on the connection. But as far as our section does on Charlotte Street, we don't have to do that. We don't have to do the engineering. We'll just lay it down. But that's probably, that's a few months out until for that start. It may be, it may be spring before that starts. Public Safety Bay Apron, I mentioned, that one is, we're in queue with the contractor right now to do that work. So I'm hoping a week or two to start for that one. Pickleball courts, you know, we've set that money aside and I think we've all talked multiple times about putting the brakes on doing pickleball until we get done with our parks and recreational plan, figure out where we want to put the pickleball courts.
And where are we within?
So actually, the engineer that is doing the work, McGill Associates, is who got ordered the contract. We have been talking to them and they've already started doing some work behind the scenes. We're going to meet with them next week to start rolling out surveys and things of that nature to the citizenry. And Gray Eagle renovation, we're getting estimates on and quotes on the work to get in line, but that won't start until spring because we've got indoor soccer from November till March. So I think the numbers are, are pretty decent right now.
Off the topic, did the contractor get over to the workforce?
As of yesterday, he had not, but I will follow up today.
So I have suggestions or ideas about future allocations of this ARP money, but I'm sure all the council members do, and I'm sure the public does too. So I'm just not clear on the process at this point.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's, I think that's appropriate to bring up today. I think maybe that's what we really need to focus on there, depending on what's forward. And I think, I think some, I actually think probably another workshop where we offer and make sure the public knows, including the public end, we'll have to, we'll just allow for public, you know, public comment. And maybe see how many people here, but yeah, take the judgment. We probably, one more liberal at a time. In three minutes, we do three minutes if we do a, but we can do, I think that's a good start. Because it's, it's, it's my perspective that we still really need to get the plan update, direct plan update before we can, you know, before we can start prioritizing things and know where we all want to be and so forth. So I'm not sure, it's up to you all, but I'm not sure if you're ready at this point to make decisions, but you could, you know, I think we've had a longer list, which if you want to just get those out there for the public to hear about, what's maybe on your minds for a long list that we would, you know, that we would get public input on. And then, you know, when, when the plan is in place, we can, we can make some final decisions. So, does anybody have other thoughts?
No, I just think that if we, it might make the most sense, you know, at this point we've allocated half of it, you know, a little over half of it, to, to have a clear vision for the public to be able to weigh in on, you know, a clear set of, like you were saying, a list, and then also some price tags or general price tags that would go along with that.
Yeah.
So that people can get a sense as to what we can actually do with 1.1 million. And, and, you know, if there's multiple projects we can cover, if it's something to go towards a stormwater project or whatever.
Yeah, I agree. So just for the, so the public would have something to think about as to what's on council's mind. You want to, just, and it'll be in the minutes, so it'll be helpful. What are some of the other things, a few come to my mind, that there are suggestions that we've had in discussions, that your wishlist to use for the project?
I can speak to one item that's on my wishlist, and that is trash and recycled carts that would be able to be standardized and so that, that can be lifted up. And I can't remember the number, 400-ish?
Five, about 500, I think.
500,000. It's a big number. But I think it's an opportunity. I think it is something that would be useful for the town. I think it'd be useful for the employees in sanitation that we'd have to lift and standardize it. Because I don't think it actually addresses solid waste issues, which is something I, it's a bigger issue we really have to address. So that's one item that's on my list.
So in light of that, is there any homework that needs to be done so that council could make, you know, you know, an intelligent decision about how that would work? Does it, you know, how does it, how's it, how's it work all over the different parts of town where, you know, where pickup is, you know, we have to still have places where the small truck has to go?
Yeah, that's correct.
So just a little more, how would we follow up on that to get more information to council as to the details of how that might work?
You know, we can staff and put together some information as far as how many stops that we get with those small trucks if that helps, you know, whether that's, I think it's probably any more than 20%, but get those numbers for you.
Yeah, I, that's, that, to me, that's kind of a hard start. So if you, if you bought these, bought them carts, the cans, I mean, does that cover, you know, back in, back into your numbers, that 80% of the pickups?
Right.
Does that?
And also, is there any efficiency gained in employees by that, which I don't know? I suspect there is, but I don't know.
If I can speak absolutely at big names, we want our trucks that if we're currently getting the blackboard car trucks and small trucks, but where they would be picking up six bags, drinks, if there's no cans, if they have cans, they would just drag the cans with trucks, give it, and just throw it back. So it would absolutely help them apart. We're safe to confirm that and physical.
So, yeah, I have.
So, yeah, I mean, I think we need more detail.
Right.
Just like all the projects that we're going to talk about.
Every one of them, we will, but that's.
We need details.
That's right, that's right. Didn't have some, I didn't have someone who happened to be in the business, that was a business they were in during their career, manufacturing the cans, that said, you know, the history of it is it does reduce your work cost, expenses to go down. So, all right, anybody else?
I'll jump in. I have a few. The two top ones for me are holding back enough money. We have two studies in the works, with the staffing study and the parks and rec study. And I don't want to get those studies back and then not have any money to implement. So I think it's real important that we hold back enough that we can actually do what parts of those studies we feel is important. I'd like to see us go ahead with our already approved plan to install solar panels on all the town buildings. I see that as an investment that'll pay for itself in the long run. A couple of other ones. I think there's some deferred maintenance at Lake Tomahawk that needs to be addressed. I've heard that we need to renovate the restrooms on Cherry Street. And I'm also a big fan of moving forward with that new structure at the community garden. I heard it, it's a multipurpose building. Sometimes it's called a barn, but I think it's more than a barn. And it's worth, that's another thing we need a lot more detail on, but I think it's worthy of consideration.
Great, thank you Pam. Anyone else?
I'll piggyback on some of the things Pam mentioned. I think this is an opportunity for us to invest in maintenance and fixing up some of the things that we've kind of let fall apart, you know, thinking of the courts down at Cragmont, both the basketball and tennis, some issues at Tomahawk, the bathrooms on Cherry Street, some of our sidewalks that probably need to be revamped. You know, this is an opportunity for us to kind of, instead of building new things and starting new projects, fix up some of the stuff that we have not been able to afford to fix up or have not prioritized in the past. In addition to that, I think it may be an opportunity, it may be good for both goodwill with public and also to more rapidly advance some of our stormwater projects. And then we, you know, we're working with that firm to look for grant funding for stormwater. But if we, if there's a project, you know, that, that would fall under this, that we can identify, that would make a, you know, make a sizable impact on some of our stormwater issues, this might be a chance for us to allocate some of the funds for that.
Thanks. Anyone else? I think we have to consider, and I don't think, I don't think it's, I don't think we use all, all the money, although all of the money might cover it, but the tennis complex. And whatever the number is, that we, we try to take a giant sized step in setting aside funds to accomplish that. So let's say if it's three quarters of a million dollars, that we suddenly use 250 of this, and then we can maybe in two budget years catch up and.
Is this the courts down in Cragmont?
That is, you know, it may, it may, it may be that after we get, get the study update back and plan update back, that we reconsider. I, I can't think of where else it would be myself right now. But, you know, it's been in plans for a long time, and it's just what it is, you know, I think we need to move forward on that. So that would be the only one I would add to these. I think most of these we should talk about. And I also very much agree with the deferred maintenance. You know, it's kind of what, what government does, you buy new things, but you don't really, you don't often keep trying to keep and maintain what you have. So.
That, that did remind me, Mayor Harris, the other thing I was thinking about was the Cragmont Park restrooms that are in the, you know, in the current land.
Yeah, yeah, that's in, I think that's just part of the complex. I think that's part of it.
I think it's in, it's 2007, you're right.
Yeah. Anyone else? It's a good list to start with. So we got those in the minutes. The public can reflect on that and we'll just schedule another meeting and keep moving forward.
And if I could, Mr. Mayor, what I can do, some of this stuff, I can bring back, you know, some more information on, right? Because I think you're going to need it, you know, to make some of these decisions, like the costs, different things of that nature.
Yeah, start working on it.
Start working on some of that stuff.
Yeah, I think so. You may, as you get into that, some questions may come up that you need to, need to ask us. This town's got anybody else on this? I think that's a good start. So just to recap, we want to get the update to the rec plan, comprehensive plan back. And, and then we can, we can start honing in on things a little bit better along with some public input.
Josh, do you want to remind me, when did you say that rec plan would be?
You know, we're hopeful it's going to be done by the end of the year, which I think we can still meet that timeline. It may be just after the end of the year, before we get it done. But two or three months, I think, once they get rolling, should be good. Now, the pay study that we're performing, I am meeting with that consultant October 20th, I believe, to talk about how that's moving forward. And I think we're getting closer to getting some, some real numbers for that. So that, good. You'll get that before the end of the year, for sure.
Right. Anything else on the topic of the allocation of the park funds?
So we're, we're thinking we'll meet after the rec plan comes back, so beginning of next, next year, then?
I think we meet before that.
Oh, before?
Probably again.
Okay.
Because we may need to meet more than once for public input.
Sure.
And to meet after, before, I think it'd be good to meet before, if at all possible, definitely definitely meet possible. And, and then, yeah, probably once we start honing in on things, we'll have numbers, a more realistic idea of what, what we have before us. Anybody else? All right, let's move along to the stormwater utility bill collections. And I ask this to be on the agenda for just the simple reason of council giving staff to go ahead, to get a policy in place for us, bring it back to us. Because as it is now, there's no tool for how staff deals with, with delinquent payments. And so, so if there are any councils that, that work?
So if, and I'm fine to do that. I don't know, how about you take this with you?
I think.
Take a look at it, and then we can talk about it. I mean, we can talk about it at the next Monday, Monday's meeting if y'all have time to look at it, but.
Well, why don't you give us a, just a brief overview of it? We will still take it.
Sure.
Probably like to hear about it.
I'll let Tammy lead us through, Tammy.
So basically, this is a summary of the general statute that gives us the authority to collect and the collection methods we can use. So we can collect delinquent accounts by any remedy provided by law. We can do that by sending it to debt set off, which garnishes their tax refund. Other than that, there's civil suit and criminal misdemeanor, which is not fun.
I will toss in the criminal misdemeanor part. I think we have a more recent statute that takes away the ability to post.
Yeah.
Our criminal fine on that one. They give us them, they take us away.
Yeah. And the debt set off, there's more in there. We can't send it to debt set off unless it's over $50. And when we do send it to debt set off, the fine that they charge, they add on to the, the fees. So whatever they, they owe, they add, I think it's $35 that the debt set off with the state charges for collecting, they add that on there and then they send us the money. We cannot extinguish a utility debt without receiving full payment. We don't have the authority. But we can adopt a policy to write off minimum dollar amounts. And when you look back at other policies, they, the general statute, statute usually refers to that as a minimum cost of $5 a less. That's like your printing and mailing is what they consider a minimum cost. So we can put into a policy that we have the ability to do that. I put, looking forward, what we do have the ability to do, we could add the stormwater bills on to our utility bills. That way, the stormwater bills will be broken up every month. So it would be a minimum bill to customers and maybe not be as much of a hardship on there. Doing that also allows for those customers to reach out to assistance from nonprofits to help pay their utility bills. If the town wanted to provide assistance, they could work with a nonprofit to supply money, set aside funds, and then customers could go to that nonprofit to apply for assistance. And then that takes out us, us out of the middle. So we're not making that decision. We are not in it in any way. Because we can't, we can't make those decisions because it would look like we might be biased in some way.
If I remember correctly, when we established the utility, we chose not to do the water bill route because not everyone's on stormwater.
Yeah, with our, with our new software, we went over that. And I had talked to the software company and I had them show me the, how I could import in all of the parcels, whether they're on our water system or not. And then the ability to bill owners, not renters. So we have that ability. And if for some reason the customer wants to tie on to our water system in the future, we already have their information in there. Or if we decide we're going to bill for trash pickup at some point, or we're going to bill for some other service, they're already there. We have their address. We have their parcel information. All of that stuff is there because it's based on the tax information we get from the county. So we will, but that will be going forward with the next billing cycle for '24. When you, when you add it on to the utility bill, the board could make the decision where the stormwater is paid first, water's paid last. So then that increases the rate of stormwater collections because the water gets disconnected for not getting paid. So your water, your water would fall down to the bottom and that, and that causes accounts, you know, they could be disconnected. So that's your collection method, rather than sending them to debt set off or, or other items that you may choose to do. So you would probably have less people that would be going to collections because the stormwater bills would be paid before anything else.
Also, it's $6 a month.
Mm-hmm. For the majority, yeah. And when, and when I looked on the state's website, the stormwater survey they, they had out there for '21, '22, the majority of the municipalities use adding it to the utility bills. The next one down was adding it to tax bills. There was a handful that did the standalone bills like we did.
But we made that decision because we didn't really have an option.
Yeah, we couldn't do it in our old software. We, we just didn't have that ability. So.
Okay, questions?
What is our, so are we having trouble collecting?
We have about 10% paid right now, which is about $40,000.
That have paid?
That haven't paid.
This is last year's.
Yeah.
That's right.
This year's bill, did it do yet?
We've sent it out, but it's, it's not, yeah, yeah. And when you add it on to the utility bill, it would fall under the same guidance as your utility policy is. So it would be due, you know, the same time every month that they are due. If customers didn't have a utility bill and they wanted to pay the whole $72 if it's, if they owed that much per year, they have that right. They can go ahead and prepay the $72 and then it just automatically applies it throughout the year if they don't feel like making the $6 a month payment. So it just gives them more flexibility adding it to the utility bill. And it's a lot easier to keep up with than having it as a standalone bill.
So a little bit part of the discussion to be had, but the comment here about parking, partnering with a not-for-profit for those who need financial assistance. Do we do that with the water fund? Who would we partner with?
Well, we, we don't, we get assistance. I mean, customers can go get assistance, but we don't provide any monetary money. I don't think we.
No, we don't. But people go through like Amblin, or Swamba Valley Christian.
Do you direct them that way?
Yes, yeah.
So that's all we're talking about.
Yeah, well, we could, the town has the authority where you can make a donation. Yeah, well, we could, the town has the authority where you can make a donation to them and say, okay, we're setting aside this money to use for these customers, and, and they can set up a policy, say, if you wanted to use it for customers that were experiencing hardship, and that's outside of their normal practice of supplying funds out of whatever, because, you know, they've only got a small bucket of money that they can.
So the town can set aside, I see, a thousand dollars or something?
Yeah.
That's what it's for, that's for financial assistance.
Yep.
Water and stormwater. You could do one, one fund.
Yes, yep.
So they've got some options, so.
Yeah, yeah.
And this new, new software is giving us the ability to have a lot more options.
Right.
Yeah.
So, um, council, what's your pleasure on this? Do you want to just, uh, have some time to think about it? And we'll get back, maybe follow up, uh, if not, at a regular meeting on Monday, we'll follow up soon and see what, give, give Josh some direction on what you want to do?
So what exactly are we, are you looking for direction on, whether to follow this new kind of policy or?
But this is sort of like our option.
These are our options, okay.
Yeah, we, we need to provide some more specific direction, and I think if you think about it, you know, speak with, speak with Josh about it, and we'll, actually, I think, let's just put this on the schedule for a special call meeting. It's a, it's a good topic, you know, to take another step and, uh, see what we can get in place, because we'll have, we have a couple of things coming up. We always have something coming up, but we'll, we'll get that. And if we don't get it in a special call meeting, we'll just get it on a, a regular agenda sometime.
I just want to make sure the public has ample time to know about it and to respond to it, and I'm not sure Monday night is the.
That's right. I agree. And it's also always, I, I still think there's some misunderstanding about the stormwater utility anyway, uh, because there is most, most things in government. But as I think, you know, we've, we've tried to make sure everyone knows, uh, the town is required to have a stormwater permit from, uh, it goes through the state, it's federal government is the, is the, is the movement behind it, and it goes back to the Clean Water Act, but we are required to have a permit, um, and, uh, stormwater permit. And permit requires you to have a plan and to execute the plan. And so, um, you have to have funds to do that, and so that's, that's why the utility was created. You really don't have very much choice, you're going to have to do it one way or the other. Utility is a clean way to do it, because you've got all the money all set aside nicely for that purpose, so. And, uh, we're going to get a report on, on our.
Monday.
On our operations so far on Monday, so we look forward to that. Anything else, council? So we'll, we'll get a little more specific on this and give Josh some directions, think about it, see what you, see what you, what is best.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. There's nothing else on that? How about then we move on to the golf course string banks?
So, yeah, I know there's, there's been some, um, or I've gotten some questions over the years and, and maybe even more recently, so we thought we'd put this together, show everybody, at least on council and the public that's here and watching, kind of the reasons behind, the reasons behind we did what we did at the golf course. And also, we've recently had a conversation in a, in an actual site visit with the engineer on this project, who Jamie Matthews, our Public Services Director, rode around with on the golf course a few weeks ago, looking at specific areas that we could maybe trim down some and still stay within our, our vegetated buffers that we've agreed to provide on these creeks, really in perpetuity.
So how much, um, to the public, how much we spent on, uh, well, some of it was grant money, but the total amount spent on those, uh, those string banks.
I'm going to, and I'm, I, this is going to be an approximate number, I would say we're probably in the realm of around three hundred thousand dollars or so, grant funds and our funds together, roughly.
We, we read twenty percent on this.
No, it was actually, I think this was a fifty-fifty match. But I'm going to let Jamie, if you don't mind, um, actually, I don't know which is the best, best way to go about doing that, um, showing you some, the PowerPoint with the kind of the maps of where we did our work, and then showing you some pictures, let's do that first, and then I'll let Jamie talk about his meeting with the engineer and where we can trim it.
I think that's, we'll sound good to everybody?
So, now, this may be hard to see for everybody, this was the original map that was submitted with the grant. This was a department of, well, I don't know, Department of Water Resources funding cycle, um, same kind, same funding cycle, same funding pot, we got money for to do the stream restoration at Vector's Park, they got the shore last year, but we've used that money and been successful on the golf course in, in making those, those funds. So kind of, it got broken down really into three sections, if you will, you see the red lines, the on-tomahawk branch, which were really in dire need of some help, which you'll see in a few minutes, and some pictures that I've got. But, um, this is what was submitted, and we've worked on every one of these sections, and for the most part are finished with the stream bank restoration on the golf course.
So could you go back to that, just for the, uh, make sure I'm looking at the rec plan, okay? But lower, lower right, that is running between, uh, four and five.
Yes, where the maintenance building.
Yes, so that's how near, that's nearest lake. Then the next, next, uh, area, which is in the center of the green, that's running between fairways two and seven, right? And then the, the other, the one just above it is running along the eighteenth fairway to the right of it. And then above that is between the sixteenth and the seventeenth.
That's correct, fairways, that is correct, Mayor. And if you recall, we had a few, we had a few ponds on about fourteen, but, you know, those have been, oh, they're gone, right? You know, we got rid of a couple of those, um, with this project. So this, this section in particular was, uh, in really bad shape, and this was the first section we tackled, I think, back in sixteen or seventeen, two thousand sixteen or seventeen. But this is the section that ran, uh, as Mayor Harris mentioned, between four and five, but pretty much the, the main stem of Tomahawk branch that feeds into Lake Tomahawk. That's Laurel Circle Drive at the bottom, and you've got the golf course maintenance building up there kind of at the top. Then we had, uh, an area here that, um, is actually, this is the, um, this is, I think, it's the sixteenth, I don't know whether I have it on. Anyway, this area was also in bad shape, and I don't know if I'm in bad shape, you'll see in these pictures, but, you know, the string banks, they're, they're completely clear, they're eroded really bad, some of those were almost eighty high whenever we got into this work, especially close to the maintenance building. This was an area where we didn't have to do a lot of work, but we did do some vegetated buffering on the stream. You'll see the, um, kind of the red portion come in there, that, that is the pro shop you see, uh, and the restaurant there at the bottom. And this is the section that was on sixteenth, right there. Here, here are some photos now. So this is what it looked like before we did the work, okay? So this is maintenance building, and this was the, the section that ran between four and five that was just in terrible shape, as you can see.
So as we're seeing, is it, if it, can we all mark a difference in the lake? And, you know, because this, this, this growth on these banks has been, has been matured a good while now.
Yeah, I, we have not measured that.
I can tell you.
Sorry, Josh, I didn't mean to cut you off, but I can tell you, yes, we have, because
the last time we dredged it, seems we can run longer between dredging now than what we used to, and not can get half the amount of sediment that we used to from the basin.
When, when is it, you know, we did the work, a little different topic here than golf course, but it's tied to the stream bank. The, you know, we did some, some work, it was, it was some repair work, but it was some work to make it so you could have a flat place to put your machinery.
Correct.
So that you could keep that, um, uh, frequent, you have frequent maintenance there where the, it comes out of the lake. So when does, has that been, has maintenance been done since we created that?
Yes, it has, yeah. We actually done it a month ago and, and took it out. We're, we're back on track now that it's done, we was doing it every quarter, every four months, and, uh, so I noticed, you know, since that work been done, when we cleaned it up this last time, that we're not near the amount of sediment in it, seemed to be, so, and that's something we can monitor moving forward to, to make sure we can tell by the amounts we take out, because, but we got to be careful different times of year, you know, during the rainy season, we may have more sediment than we go in the dry season a lot now, but, um, I, I know from doing it for years, it'd be easy to compare.
Thanks, I'm sorry, just curious.
That's fine. Uh, here's another, this is all the same section, but, you know, there was a, there was a, a very old, like dangerous looking bridge, actually. That's been removed, that's no longer there, but you can see the, the banks, you know, they're eroding away. This is what it looks like now on the right. And then this picture, of course, is what that whole stream looked like four or five years ago on the left, running up to the maintenance building, and then on the right, of course, is, is today.
Also, for those who don't get out to the golf course, don't play golf or walk on it early in the morning, the, I think Bill can attest to it, because he walks in the morning, the, the urge, the urge line is standing.
With that being said, we are trying to get some, uh, recognition and get on to the Audubon program for golf courses, um, right now, Savannah, on our, on our projects right now. This is the end of what I wanted to show you as far as kind of where we began, what it looked like before and where we are now, and, uh, if Mayor and Council are okay with it, I, I'll turn it over to Jamie, I'll let him give y'all an update of kind of what he experienced riding around with the engineer on trimming.
Any questions for Josh, and we'll move on. All right.
So, yeah, I had the privilege of riding around with Andrew Beck with Headwaters Engineering, uh, while Josh was getting some continuing ed, and we spent several hours and spent, you know, a lot of time in different locations along the course, and I apologize, because I don't do a lot of golfing, so I'm more of a location type guy than I am knowing where the numbers and the holes are. But I do know the course, um, and I gave you a brief overview of our discussion, just where you'd have it in front of you, but, uh, basically, the conclusion to it all is, you know, there's a lot of woody vegetation that's, that's taken hold on those banks that's keeping erosion down, uh, like river birch and alder and a lot of different type hedges, and, and Bill used to talk about the birch, and, you know, one thing we noticed walking down to the creeks too, is a lot of aquatic, you know, life, as far as that goes, that you didn't used to see because the banks was bare. But one of the recommendations was, you know, and it was, it was a good project, it, he didn't say that we couldn't do some pruning, he was just very much against taking stuff out.
Yeah.
Or cutting it too low, because, you know, it can kill it and kill the root system, and then, then nothing holds the erosion back or the banks from caving off like they used to. So one of the recommendations was, is to take some of the worst areas, and then this time, or later than this time of year, good rule of thumbs, first frost, or what I would advise when the leaves come down, is to take and hand prune some of those alders and river birches, things of that nature, where you got a clean cut, the sap's down in it, so it's not going to kill it into the root system. And then come spring, the foliage will come right back and be, be just as good as it ever was, and, uh, and there won't be any brush or anything left in creeks, so it'd be a good winter project when golfing slows down and the grass slows down, there's not as much mowing, um, but as far as mowing it down with a sidearm or taking it out, was a hundred percent against that. And, uh, you know, I don't, I don't, I do minimal maintenance at the golf course, but I hear a lot out, you know, in the public as far as what needs to be done, um, but one of the things we'd talked about, and there's just a reference on the back, was putting some signs up the pro shop, and it may be in the grill and around, to try to educate the public, you know, about why those buffers are there and what the purpose of them's for, and, and, you know, what the good outcome is about it. But, yeah, that was sort of the overview, it wasn't, there wasn't a whole lot said, there was more time spent walking and looking, um, but we can absolutely prune it, he recommends about head high, no lower, you know, which, depending on, I'd say, six or seven foot high.
These are the trees?
These are the trees, yeah, the woody stuff, the actual green foliage, not to mess with at all, just let it, just let it stay and grow, and, you know, the foliage seems to get more thicker, which creates more of a, a buffer against the ailments, is rain and flooding and stuff like that, so.
I noticed where some, not, not trees, but some of the high grasses had been.
Took down some?
Down some, yeah. I didn't think it was planted.
Yeah. Uh, I don't know, that would probably be on Jerry and them, whether they've done any trimming up there or what, but, uh, but the, you know, the foliage can stay the same, the woody stuff, he says we can trim down with no problems, just make sure we do it at the right time of year, that way in the spring it comes back and it don't kill the root system, which the root system is, you know, the main thing we want to take care of, because that keeps erosion down and keeps the banks intact.
So, and Jerry's aware, I'm sure he's, but, but that's, I think that's, that communication.
Yes.
And I, I do, I may be wrong, but I check on the cutting back things, other than.
Yes, right.
Because he said not to, not to leave all the high grasses, be, let them be.
Yeah, yeah, he didn't really, you know, speculate on the high grasses, he was really pleased with how everything looked on that.
Yeah, well, he didn't say anything about it, maybe he clarified, okay, the grasses to be, you know.
Yeah, oh, yeah, you could cut them, I mean, there's nothing against, it won't hurt the grasses.
So he didn't say not to cut them.
He didn't say not to cut them, he just said, the grass is, you know, is what really helps with the flooding and things of that nature, because it's a lot thicker, uh, but he, he was not against us cutting that if we needed to, just not cutting it down.
Right, right, and I think what, um, I, someone spoken to me about, about it, is that some of the alders were, um, they were hindered a bit, which I'm, I'm hindered a lot in a home hall, but they were hindered, yeah, by the height of some of the, um, the high grasses and so forth, but only in some places.
Right.
Like the, like on number three, you know, number three, just, uh, and, you know, you're, you're teeing off, and if you're, you're teeing off the lady or senior tees, you don't hit the ball high, you know?
Right.
That they, they were asking for it to be.
Took down some.
Just to be dealt with a little bit, they understand that it can't be, you know, taken down, you know, with the leading or any longer. And I think that's, I think, I think Jerry accomplished that.
Yeah.
It weren't, it wasn't like you'll take it down all the way, you know, from, all the way along, uh, four and five, they weren't asking for that, they were just asking, right with the bridge and stuff, for it to be kind of.
Well, a good, a good thing to look at too, you know, we got to leave grass minimum fifteen inches on our dam, so if it's good for the dam, I'd say it would be just as good for.
I would say fifteen might be a little severe in the.
Eh, on the golf course, it would, yeah, I agree.
But, you know, but it's that high.
Right. So, yeah, at this time of year, in the fall of the year, after the first frost, it won't, it won't hurt a bit to, to take it down some and, and prune some of the woody vegetation out, and then come spring, it should be good.
I would think the grasses have just gone out.
They should, yeah, they will.
So do we already have some signage out there, little yard signs that tell people?
Well, the yard sign, I think, I think all they say, it's not as good as that, what that one says, I think it just says no mows on.
Well, I love that, this sign, the new signs, and not just the golf course, you know, for non-golfers too, like more around Lake Tomahawk area down there.
Mm-hmm.
The general public.
Yeah, I, I agree, education's good, and, uh, I think that's where a lot of it is, just getting the word out about why they're there and what their purpose is.
Yeah, actually, when we were doing a summary of what had been, what had been restored, we left off, or I didn't mention, the, the string between the tenth and the eighteenth.
Yep, yep.
You know, which, um, which, those, the restoration work, and I guess it was true with all the restoration work, besides the banks, they also put these, those huge boulders in there to create ponds and holes over there.
Slow water.
Slowed it down, yeah, it looks good too.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's right.
Yeah, it's, it's not, I mean, it's, you know, I mean, you and I recall vividly what we used to just run completely orange.
Oh, yeah.
Wash over everything, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's a pretty good success story.
Yeah, so it's, it really has done well, so.
I lost a few bars in that, in that rougher a couple of weeks ago, about.
Go back and look for them in a couple of months.
Exactly, yeah, when it, when it dials down, just take a walk down.
There you go.
Try to buy no balls, it's very.
But, but I think, uh, I just, and it's essential not just for, um, you know, I mean, it's good for the town, of course, but it's also good for the golfers, because, even though I'd be frustrated at times, because, uh, you know, the, the less downstream issues we have from the golf course, the better the public opinion will be about the golf course.
Yeah.
That's right.
Um, is your team working with the golf course team to make sure they know all this and are trained properly to?
We, we do work with Amber Agar. We, we do work with them regularly.
Really Josh.
But it's really Josh that's, you know.
Will take care of it.
That's the liaison between us two as far as, you know, how that stuff gets relayed to them.
Yeah, just to be, just to clarify, the golf course over the years has been, you know, at one point in time, our former finance director, that was his to watch over. But for the past few years, Josh is, so he's, he was Grant and Jerry, he's the, he's the, he's the guy. All right. Anything else for Jamie?
All right. Thank you, Jamie. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jamie. All right. And so the last item on the agenda is a discussion, if you wish to have it. What we really wanted to do is to get the agenda in the meeting, a public meeting. And, you know, Josh, what I might suggest, yeah, it's fine, just it'll be in the agenda of this meeting and that'll make it a public document. If you saw the agenda that we prepared, Pam had input on this and suggested it actually. And I think it's a good idea, it gives us a little format to follow. And I like the idea of going through each department and talking about strengths and things that could be improved on and that kind of thing. So we look forward to that. Does anybody have any, any comments or changes to make on it? So, and just let the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, if we could explain a little bit more of what we're talking about.
Right. Do you, does the public have a copy of that?
No.
It's simply an agenda, which will be in a closed session for Josh's annual performance review. And so you see that, you can see the agenda and unfortunately I have to, you could look online, it'll be online with you. It'll be online and it'll be part of the minutes of this meeting. But it's a, it's pretty straightforward, what, the way we've conducted the annual review in the past, 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 cause I was over. Is that we have a written, like most of the posted reviews, performance reviews, have a written document that goes out from the town attorney's office, goes out to each council member and is returned to the town attorney's office. And the reason for that is we make confidential personnel matters. So if you can speak to that, get anything to add to it. But, but that's, that's how we do it. And then he, then the town attorney, when we, when we have to review, we go into closed session, which we're allowed to do the personnel matters. And town attorney delivers those, he summarizes, piles the results of the written, written scoring and so forth. And then he actually usually hit the right, I think.
I was, I passed it off.
Yeah. So anyway, but then we, we have a review session and there we go. And then if, I, I believe last year, I'm not, not quite so, you know, as part of the process, we also asked the town manager to, you know, to provide what he thinks his goals should be for the coming year, for the next year, and we comment on those. And I believe we made those public last year.
I can't remember.
I think we did. I think we did too. So what, if we would intend to do the same thing this year, and those would be make his, his goals approved by council, we'll make those public. And that's also the time that we adjust the town manager's compensation package that is needed. Our goal is always to keep it competitive with our, our peers in the county, we reveal with, and so forth. So, and because when you have to look for one, you don't want to be behind in, in the compensation handle, you want to be behind it regardless. So you don't want to be behind in anybody's compensation. So.
Can I just add on to that?
You can, sure.
The idea behind this was to make it more a conversation and a dialogue. So we have things to tell the town manager, but we want to hear from the town manager, not just Josh, any town manager. You know, it's a more detailed process designed to have input going both ways. And we also felt like it should be a two-part process where we have that part and then we meet a second time. Because that conversation should inform Josh's goals, right? And so we felt like he needed some time within the interim there to take what we've discussed and then formulate his goals and we would come back. And then, you know, the idea at the end of next year, we have that same review, you can take those goals and say, where are we with those goals? How did it go? So I think, I think having a, a really good process, evaluating a town manager, any town manager, is, is really important. I mean, it's a key position for this community and we need to take the time to do it right.
So the agenda, which I actually don't have in front of me, but we, it's, it's not, it's not very complex, but it's, it, we, we will start by looking at the written summaries and then we'll, we'll have a discussion and the outline is to just hit each department. And that's really the kind of it. And then we'll, we'll have a discussion, whatever the council wants to say and ask or whatever. Then we will conclude that closed session and then we'll have a second closed session so that Josh can, from that first session, be informed, do his, do his annual goals. We'll hold a closed session for those and then we'll make his goals public after that. And any, any changes in compensation also have to be done at a public meeting. So I believe that's it. Any, any comments or questions? All right. So I think that completes our agenda. Council, does anybody have any, anything to add here before we, did you have comments to?
No, sir. I did not.
Have anything?
Mayor, I just want to say, I want to thank Pam for her leadership on this and getting us going on the process. It is very important and this feels better and more organized.
Thanks. Yes, indeed. That's right. Anyone else? All right. Thank you. Many good journeys. Thanks for coming.